Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco leads us in invocation followed by the flag salute. I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so. Thank you. Good evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the, all the special blessings you've given us here in this community. Please watch over our leadership. Give us the wisdom to make the right choices. Those that are on our city council, our water boards, our school boards, and all the different government agencies. Watch over those men and women that are fighting to protect the freedom for this country, our firefighters and our police officers. For these, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we're going to pledge to our flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to say good evening to everyone today. Have various presentations, so we look forward to that. I want to just remind everyone that yesterday Vice Mayor Cruzbaca and I were over at the grand opening of the fourth Starbucks in the city of Baldon Park, and that one is at Kaiser. Very nice. Open seven days out of the week, and they have all kinds of little module exercise equipment there. So if you want to go over there, it's open to the general public, of course. Chief, thank you for being here, and Mark and Manny and Dan and Shannon, everyone that was there on that particular day. So it's interesting to see the Starbucks right, right at Kaiser outside. So just want to remind everyone as well, Vice Mayor and I as well, Cruzbaca, were at the seniors event this morning. I know we have the candidates here that were chosen, and it was packed house there this morning. So thank you for allowing us that great opportunity. At this point, we're going to go ahead and take roll call. So we will have, are you the only one here, Kristi?
All right.
Mayor, this one also announced that last night on Cinco de Mayo, we were at Guadalajara Grill. I was Mayor Protem Cruzbaca, joined by Mayor Lozano, myself, and we presented a plaque for the 20th anniversary, or 20 years of having the Guadalajara Grill there that has really supported our community, provided a venue for culture and art and history of the Hispanic culture. So we enjoyed a really good time there, and we also gave a plaque on behalf of all council members.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you with that, Mayor.
Thank you for buying me a couple of water there. We don't have to report in the 460 form, thank goodness. But also acknowledge and thank the Ballpark Police Officers Association. I know that they had their Cinco de Mayo event yesterday. I was unfortunately was not able to make it yesterday, and I know that they attract a lot of residents in Ballpark. So thank you for that as well. So yes, council member.
Yes, I would also like to thank the POA, I'm sorry, the police officers for the graduation of our pride platoon this past weekend. It was really nice, well attended by all of us, and it was really nice to see the kids graduating and be so proud of themselves. So thank you and thank the association. Thanks.
And I, Mayor, if I may, I would like to also, I attended the Cinco de Mayo celebration that the police officers and staff had yesterday with 10 piñatas, lots of candy, taco man and lady. It was very, very nice. Councilmember Pacheco and myself attended, along with a lot of staff that came by to have something to eat. And thank you very much to all the officers and you, Chief, that participated in that. That was very nice.
Also, I'd like to thank again our police officers. Great, great event that you had last night. I know you put the word out to our community. You put out flyers, and I think you did some robo calls. So it was great. Great to see all officers interacting with our community. We appreciate that and thank you for that. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, at this point, we're going to go in the presentations that we have here. Yes. Oh, roll call. That's right. Sorry about that, Kristi. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm asking you, please excuse the city clerk, Alejandra Avila, and treasurer Maria Contreras this evening. Neither of them are present.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I will move to excuse. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Any objections? You can unmute. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, this point.
There was a formal roll call.
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor Lozano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Baca.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Rubio.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for assisting us in that particular area. This point, we're going to go into the presentation. The first one that we have is the Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing May 2015 as National Lupus Awareness Month. Do we have someone that will be the recipient of this particular? Oh, really? Okay. All right. We'll have you come up to the lectern, and then we'll have you come up to the front. All right, I'm going to, I'll go ahead and read it. It's there right here where the lectern's at, and then we'll bring you up here after. All right. So Lupus Awareness Month, May 2015. Lupus commonly known as lupus is an acute chronic complex and often life-threatening immune disease. Research estimate that 5 million people have been diagnosed with lupus or related disease throughout the world, and approximately 100,000 more are diagnosed every year. It has been estimated that more than 1.5 million Americans live with some form of lupus. And lupus strikes women of childbearing age, and it affects all aspects of their lives. Women of color develop lupus at a rate two to three times the rate that Caucasian develop lupus. And lupus impacts more than just the life of patients. It affects their family, friends, coworkers, employers, employers, and community. And lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to symptoms of other illness, and early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical to the improvement of the quality of life survival rate of people with lupus. Increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. Major gap exists in the understanding of causes and consequences of lupus, and I think this is extremely important. I'm glad that you're here to represent that. What I, so want to thank you on behalf of the city of Baldon Park. Did one of you want to speak on it in particular? Go ahead, up to the lectern.
Thank you to the city of Baldon Park for allowing us to come and accept this proclamation. We actually have a couple of lupus survivors here with us today accepting this proclamation. It is a horrible disease. There is no cure. It is not a cancer, and there is very, very little research done. There's only one medication to treat lupus currently, and it affects and impacts the lives of everyone affected with the disease and their families. Thank you again, and May is Lupus Awareness Month.
Let me ask a real quick question. So how does one, how could you tell me, and it just talks about the illness.
Yes.
What are the signs?
There's, there's actually several signs, and it mimics a lot of other diseases. There's chronic fatigue, there's hair loss, rash, sun sensitivity, bone aches, joint aches, inflammation. It's just a variety of, you know, other mimicking diseases and conditions. But you, there is not one lab work that will tell you, yes, you are positive for lupus or not. There's a contributing factors, environmental factors, genetic factors, and also like increase of stress level. That causes the flare. There is no cure, and it does not go away.
Wow.
Once you're diagnosed, you have it for life.
Wow. All right. Thank you. Let's have you come up to the lectern. We'll get a picture up here.
Thank you.
Where's, where's Carrillo? Oh.
Right there.
Oh, Gina Yala is here.
And Mary.
Oh. Oh, that's right, Mary. That's right.
Purple is the color.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Who was here last year?
We were.
Oh, well, you went on. Okay.
Yes.
Pleasure.
Two of my cousins.
Thank you very much for being here.
Be great.
Oh.
A little bit tighter.
Right. A little bit tighter?
Yes, we'll take a few pictures. Count three. One, two, please hold. One more, please.
Several men.
Count three. One, two, and... Very good. Thank you.
Very much.
Don't fall over.
Do me a favor. Right your hands down. Right here.
Number three?
Yes, yes.
She has.
He has.
It's a disease. We have long disease.
It's nervous system.
Yes.
Bring it here. Bring it.
Thank you, and I will send you.
I'll reach them.
I'll reach.
Right here, right on.
I mean.
Okay.
Can I have my chair back?
Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. They're going to bring up a flyer, so we'll get that going. At this point, I'd like to also, the following one we have is recognition to Deanna Artesi Agüer from Ballpark High School and Alejandra Perez Sierra Vista High School for winning the Mark Daniel Flores Music Scholarship Award. So at this point, you want to go and do the actual presentation down there, and then we'll bring them up here for a picture. All right, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Vida Flores, and I belong to the Mark Daniel Flores Music Foundation. And believe it or not, we have six years.
Wow.
We've given out $11,000, and we, our first group that went out in, in 2010 is now graduating. So I have, I have one doctor, I have one musician, it's clarinet, by the way, and I've got, and one didn't go pursue college, but that's okay. And the other one is still working on it. So I'm very proud of those people.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now, my story is very, very sad. Our son passed away as he was going to school, not going to school, going to work at Tracy Elementary. He was a behavioral specialist right here at the district, and he was killed in a motorcycle accident. And we do this every year in his honor, to honor his, his, his life, because he loved music. So without any further ado, I would like to introduce to you our latest winners.
Thank you.
I gotta take off my glasses because I can't read without them. All right. Now, she comes from Sierra Vista High School. The instrument that she plays is the clarinet. She is the section leader of the clarinet section. She plans to attend California State University at Fullerton to pursue a Bachelor of Music in Music Education. She maintains a 4.0 GPA and has received the Academic Honor Roll Award every semester. She will be graduating with a biliterate seal that certifies her fluency in Spanish and English. And I just heard her speak Spanish. She speaks beautifully. She has performed at various music festivals and has an opportunity to play at Disneyland. She has balanced academics with sports, and she is on the varsity swim team and qualified for league finals. She is also an officer in the Biology Club and the Sierra Vista Ideas Club that aids undocumented students to find scholarship monies, driver's licenses, and finding lawyers for the Deferred Action Program. She is currently working on her CPR certification. She also volunteers as a math tutor in the Math Center. Winning the scholarship will enable her to purchase her own clarinet. It is my proud pleasure to present the 2015 Scholarship winner, Alejandra Perez.
So she's going to perform?
Yes.
Let's bring her up here. Up here to this little elevated area.
She needs a little platform place for music.
Oh, how about right here at this table? Okay. Hello? That's okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And we also did have another winner, but she is at the Spring Concert, performing this very second at the PAC Center.
All right. Well, let's, let's go ahead and have Alejandra Perez come on up here. Just want to, for the audience real quick, I just want to say that I admire, admire the Flores family. And, hold on, just one moment. All right, sorry about that. Just, I want to just reiterate that I admire, admire the Flores family. Of course, I didn't realize it's been six years, six years since Mark Daniel passed in a tragedy accident in Ballpark. And I remember when that occurred, that specific day. What I most admire of both of you is the fact that that was your only child, yet you have not given up, and we know that he's with us in spirit here today, and your continued investment in providing these scholarships to these youth that have so much potential. So I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Baldon Park for the great job that both you and your husband do. Thank you. Come on up here. Well, let's bring the Florists up here, please. Come on, come on up here. All right, this reads Alejandra Perez Sierra Vista High School. The city council of the city of Ballpark congratulates you for being the recipient of the 2015 Mark Daniel Flores Music Foundation Scholarship, who wish you continued success on your academic endeavors. So that's for you. We also have from the State Assembly, State Assembly Member Roger Hernandez, that reads a recognition of being a recipient of the Mark Daniel Flores Memorial Scholarship. Your community involvement and ability to overcome obstacles and adversity while excelling in your education is a testament of your hard work, focus, and perseverance. On behalf of the California State Assembly and the residents of the 40th District, congratulations and best wishes on all your future endeavors. Okay? I think that's the only one we have, right? Yeah. We're going to have her say some words. I'll tell you, the university that you're going to go to is good, because I graduated from there back in the 80s. So here we go. Go ahead.
Well, I, I'm really honored to receive this, and I want to thank my parents that they've always supported me through, you know, they thought it was a crazy dream to go to music school, but they supported me, and it's helped a lot. And I don't know, to thank Flores family for helping me, you know, get money for college. It's been a really nice experience.
That's great. And again, 4.0 GPA, correct? So what an opportunity. We're going to just place your name on the marquee on tomorrow morning, okay, or sometime in the afternoon thereafter, right? Congratulations. Thank you. Let's give her a good applause. We're going to give our appreciation to you, okay? All right, Cal State Fullerton? All right.
Take a few pictures, please.
Always a pleasure.
Okay, a few pictures. This camera first. Count three. One, two, and... Four. Okay, a few cameras now. Okay, count three. One, two, and...
Several of them, Manny? All right.
Okay. One, two, hold it. Okay, one more. One, two.
Manny, one more with my camera again.
Okay, last one.
Double clutch.
Three. Okay, one, two. And...
One more.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Apurapu. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys. Let me get to the other one. All right, the next one is the Proclamation Recognizing May 2015 as Poppy Month. So at this point, let's bring up the poppy, the poppy representative up here. She's all dressed up in poppy here. All right, so I'll read it as she makes her way, way up to the dais, Poppy Month, May 2015. "From the battlefield of World War I, weary soldiers brought home the, the memory of a barren landscape transformed by wild poppies, red as a blood that had soaked the soil. By the miracle of nature, the spirit of their lost comrades lives on, and the poppy becomes a symbol of the sacrifice of lives in war and represents the hope that none had died in vain. The American Legion Auxiliary poppy has continued to blossom for the casualties of four wars. It petals a paper bound together for veterans by, by veterans, reminding Americans each year that the men and women who have served and died for their country deserve to be remembered. Poppy Day has become a familiar transition in almost every American community. This distribution of the bright and red memorial flower to the public is one of the oldest and most widely recognized programs of the American Legion Auxiliary. America is a land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by millions who have answered the call to arms who have died on the fields of battle. The American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remain, remind Americans annually of their debt through the distribution and the memorial of flowers." The poppy. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. What is your name?
Ivory.
Ivory. You look very beautiful. All right. Okay, we're going to, we're going to hand this to you. The only thing, we have to sign this. Yes, come on up here. Here, let's, here, have a seat right here. Let's get this signed. Go ahead.
Tell them what you know about the puppies. You remember what, remember soldier?
The poppy stands for the service, the bloodshed of the servicemen and women that gave their life up for our country.
Good. Great job.
Yeah, you know what we'll do? No, better, yeah, let's, we'll put her up here.
Cool.
Put your way down here. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay. Whoa, you're taller than I am. Let's get in here. Where's that, where's the proclamation? Let's hand her the proclamation. She could hold it.
I want her, yeah, I want her to do this. This is, this is, it's going to be her time. Yep, she's going to be, good job.
Okay, this is for you as well, okay? Proclamation? Please have her hold the proclamation at the point. I'll hold it. I'll hold the proclamation.
Smile at Poppy itself.
You count three. One, two, and... One more, please, with this one. Okay, next. Okay, one, two, and hold it. Thank you.
Good job.
Mayor, real quickly, you know, it's so cute. I don't know, they can't see the little flowers, but every year they put the year on there, 2005, 6, 7, 8, and she just noticed mine. I've been collecting them. This is the 10th year I've been on the dais. She just noticed my 2005. That's pretty incredible. So I want to thank them for doing this every year they come.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. All right, so we have a couple more items here. All right, the, okay, the next one that we have is the Proclamation, Presentation of Recognizing May 2015 as Older American Month. So I will read this. Read, Older American Month, Get Into The Act, May 2015. Older Americans are among our greatest treasured, providing invaluable link to the past and wise counsel for the future. The gift of longevity will ensure that today's and tomorrow's seniors will continue making significant contribution to our families by giving of themselves freely and by sharing their wisdom and experience. It is important to acknowledge the contribution older individuals have made to our economy, well-being, and our communities and the workplace through civic leadership and mentoring. The seniors of tomorrow will be increasingly multicultural, multi-generational, more diverse socially, ethically, and economically than the past generations. An expanding elder population will profoundly impact every facet of our lives, redefining our ideas of work, retirement, and leisure, altering our housing and living arrangements, challenging our healthcare system, reshaping our economy, and altering social and public policy. The opportunities and challenges that await us as we begin a new chapter in human history require our continued commitment to the goals of ensuring that our senior citizens may enjoy active, productive, and healthy lives, and do so independently, safely, and with dignity for as long as they choose. The Declaration of Older American Month coincides with the recognition of May as Older American Month by the President of the United States, with this year's national theme being safety today, health tomorrow. So on behalf of the city of Ballpark, I guess we'll give this to the seniors as they come up, so that we could take this with them as well. We're going to require everyone to signature, so we'll start over here to my right. Okay, at this point, we're getting to the big thing here. So I will ask Marge Milkopf if she could make her way up here to the dais, please. And also, Celia Santian, if you could come up here as well. We'll have both of them. Make sure we sign that. Make sure we sign that. Okay, we're gonna have Marge come up here. Milkoff's, very active individual in our community. I'll have her have her signature. All right, actually makes her way up here. I just want to say, it's amazing to see how many of our seniors here participate in, at the Julie McNeil. But not only seniors from Ball Park, but throughout the region. And that's in particular because of the various types of programs that are being offered as well, so that's very important. Marge, come on up here.
Mayor, I also want to thank the staff at the adult school, as well as the parks and recreation, the senior center, the amazing things that these people do, the attention that they pay to them, and all the games, everything that they do in order to be, to be kept active. So, thank you very much to the adult school, as well as the parks and recreation and the senior center.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. At this point, the Ball Park Unified School District Adult and Community Education is proud to nominate Marge Milkoff for the 2015 Los Angeles County Older American Recognition Senior of the Year. Marge has been a resident of Ball Park since 1965. She has one son who is married and two grandchildren. She loves to keep active and contributes her energy and youthfulness to swimming every day at the community center. Marge has always helped others, and over the many years of retirement, has devoted countless hours in volunteering for the community of Ball Park. She has participated in assisting with the annual health fair, the past senior floats, the Christmas basket programs, along with many events at the school and senior center. Until recently, she used to drive many of the seniors to their doctor's appointments. She also continuously volunteers at her church. Marge always has a smile and a kind of words for others. She is kind, generous, youthful, and giving. She has truly deserved this honor and recognition as a senior of the year. So, at this point, I'm gonna present you with a plaque, Marge. Have to put on my glasses, of course. Here we go. So, it reads, "Marge Milkoff, 2015 Senior Citizen of the Year. The city council congratulates you for your commitment and your dedication of volunteer service to the citizens and community of the City of Ball Park." So, Marge, we'll present you with the plaque, the symbol of the great city that you have contributed so much to.
Thank you.
We're gonna all get a picture right now. Well, you know what? Should we get one separate, real quick, with her? Just go ahead and...
No.
Put the plaque together? Okay, all right. All right, then, you know what? Is it too heavy for you?
No.
Okay. All right, let me read the others. I just got voted out. Okay. All right. All right, so... Okay, the City of Ball Park has the privilege and pleasure to announce Acelia Santian for the Older American 2015 Senior of the Year. The honor is present solely to commemorate the accomplishments of particularly outstanding seniors, and Ms. Santian fits this qualification. Mrs. Santian was born on 12/13/1947, is a proud mother of eight children, 28 grandchildren, and eight grandchildren. Ms. Santian's contribution to the Julie McNeil seniors have been vital to her functionality as a communal and lively environment. Ms. Santian has lived in the City of Ball Park for 38 years and has been a driving force in the Julie McNeil Center, goals to enhance events and stimulate the community. She has been a devoted volunteer for over 10 years, providing her services to the preparation of countless hours to the city's anniversary parade, senior dances, health fairs, and daily lunch program. Also, Ms. Santian was our senior citizen prom queen in 2012 and '13, an honor bestowed by her peers for her character and constant involvement. On a daily basis, she assists with the interval lunch program by serving meals. When she is aware of a senior that is relocating, she offers her assistance with packing or moving the belongings. Ms. Santian's character is an inspiration to both the staff at the Julie McNeil Senior Center and is a giving individual. So, at this point, I want to congratulate her. La felicito. All right, so on behalf of the City of Ball Park, we present her with the symbol and the plaque that represents Ball Park. Thank you. Gracias por todo lo que ha hecho a nuestra comida a las dos. Thank you. All right, do you want to say some words? Have to say some words. Pasen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, let's all get together, come on, Marge. Okay. Oh, Carrillo, hold on, hold on.
All right, count three. This camera first, one, two, and... One more, please. Next one. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Hi, ladies. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're going to place our names on the marquee as well as the newsletter, so we're gonna do something special. All right, want to say good evening. Thank you very much to the recipients. At this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately three minutes.
Hello, city council and everybody.
Good evening.
Ball Park resident. You have minutes from May 16, 2012, May 30, 2012. I know the young lady is trying to do her job, and she's doing a great job of bringing all these late minutes. How long have you city council people been here that knew these were late, and yet you didn't turn them in to anybody? It says under the law that you're supposed to do this and make a public record. Well, she's trying to do her job, and you people keep turning these late minutes in. Somebody ain't doing their job. So, I think whoever's not doing their job should, you know, be reprimanded or told to walk down the street. She's trying to do her job, and you people are still turning in these late reports to this young lady. This is bad. Also, how many times do we citizens, let me put it this way, how many times do I gotta tell you people, quit giving the City of Ball Park away? Three of you folks believe you have all the legal right, standing on the Constitution, the state constitution, the city constitution, and every other constitution in the world, that you have the right to give our property away? We 75,000 people of Ball Park put you into office so you could make it benefit for the 75,000 people. You have not done that. Why do we have to look at you folks and tell you that you're not doing the job for the 75,000 people? How much, how much revenue are we getting from this Montebello project? I've asked you twice or three times to show figures. You don't show any, you know why? Because you're giving the city away. You three folks up there that know who you are, you should stand up and go like this. Because you have not been doing for 75,000 people in Ball Park. Look at yourself when you get up in the morning in the mirror and say, "Man, who am I going to rob today?" That's exactly what you're telling 70... Well, let me put it this way, these residents that are here. So, how many times do I gotta tell you? I'm gonna keep telling you to the day I move out of Ball Park or to the day I die. You cannot give the city away, and that's what you guys are doing, and you ladies. You guys, remember, the revenue you get from these cities pay for your early retirements, they pay for your so-called monthly, whatever you get. All of you other folks that work for the city, you get this also. So, you remember this. Next time you want to raise...
Mr. Luna.
Tell them, go to the city employees.
Okay, so the hands up. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
There goes my three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving along with public communication, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Leonardo Quesada, and I'm a resident of the City of Ball Park in the Deanser School Community. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for making this meeting possible. Mayor Lozano and council members, I am here today to talk about the Wayne Manor project, which is proposed to be built on Torch Street, the street right behind the Deanser School. I'm here to represent the concerned parents of this school. With our opposition to this project, our main concern is that we think this project will jeopardize the safety of our children. We cannot afford to gamble with their safety. The facility is planning to house 34 to 99 clients with mental disabilities who will have an open-door policy to roam the streets around our school without any supervision or anyone being responsible for their activities outside the facility. As you may already know, when people have any type of mental disability, even when they are under medication, any outside stimulation or encounter with an adult or a child might have a negative impact and can expose our children to great danger. This is our utmost concern, the safety of our children. We feel that along with the parents and the school, it is your duty as our representatives to keep our children safe. We also want to let you know that we understand the necessity of caring for these patients, and we sympathize with their mental conditions. But we are not asking, but, I'm sorry, but we are asking, it is, put this facility somewhere else where it won't be in proximity to our school or any school, jeopardizing our children's safety and well-being. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good evening.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
A todos los representantes. Mi nombre es Claudia Flores.
Okay, yeah, let's get a trans... Oh, I'm looking over here. Did you want to go ahead? All right, I'm gonna have the vice mayor. ¿Sabes lo que vamos a hacer? Lo vamos a hacer en frases, por favor, para que puedan traducir en inglés, por favor. Porque todo está grabando. We're gonna have a translator, so that, this way, Miss, we're... Everyone's in there.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Claudia Flores.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Flores.
Soy representante del comité de padres de familia.
I am a representative of the committee of parents and families.
Del distrito escolar de Ball Park.
Of the district, of the school district in Ball Park.
Representamos, yo represento la escuela de Deanser.
Okay. Excuse me, she represents the Deanser School.
Y vengo a decirles respetuosamente, en nombre de todos los padres de familia...
And she is respectfully coming to let you know, on behalf of all the parents...
Estamos en oposición al proyecto Wayne Manor.
They're in opposition of the project at Wayne Manor.
Porque es muy peligroso que esté cerca de nuestra escuela.
Because they feel it's very dangerous for it to be near their school.
La escuela Deanser. Por hoy es todo. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Gracias.
The Deanser School, and for now, that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Al terminar. I'm moving along with public communication.
How you doing?
Thomas Carey. If you want to blame anybody for all these mental places being all over the place, blame Ronald Reagan. He's the one that closed all the hospitals where they could have treated these people, and they wouldn't be a danger to anybody. Or at least, they'd be in a place with fenced in to keep them from being a danger to anybody. I noticed here on the agenda, you're still pushing those fireworks. I thought that was killed last time I was here, three weeks ago, there wasn't enough time. It seems that you're gonna spend $26,509 or $36,509. You'll burn that up in about 20 minutes. I would think that that money would be better spent on youth programs here, graffiti, clean-up, any number of other things. City first, election second, reelection, running for whatever you're running for. The city should come first. If you haven't did anything in the last two or four years, doing this one thing, it's blowing $30,000 just to, you know, to make a few points. That money would be better spent on the coming celebration in 2016 for the parade and that. If you want to have fireworks, have them then, when it'll benefit the whole city as a whole. I'm still wondering why you're not using the hub on those plaques that you give out. That is the hub that should be on there, not that Pueblo thing. That's what should be on there. That's what the Ball Park is known for. As for the fireworks, I know you're gonna put it up for a vote, and I already can tell you how it's gonna come out. I hope that Manuel Lozano will vote no and put an end to this once and for all. I really hope you vote this down for their sakes. You're taking the money from the general fund to burn it up in 20 minutes. Doesn't seem practical. That money would be better spent on something else. Graffiti removal, as I said, or youth programs over at the park, buying new equipment, something. So, you have something to show for it rather than a bunch of smoke and burned-out, whatever cinders they use for those things. Or perhaps the police, the city, to go after these people letting off those M-80s and start citing those people for those things. Where I live in San Bernardino above the freeway, they don't allow any fireworks at all. If you're caught, it's $1,000. Caught again, it's probably a lot more than that. They don't even allow them above the freeway, too close to the mountains. I just want to tell you, don't do the fireworks thing. Find other ways to extend your resume for your reelection, but do not do the fireworks.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Appreciate that. Moving along with public communication.
John Rios, resident. I was noticing on your agendas that stuff about people cooking in their homes and selling it and going someplace else and selling and stuff like that. Code enforcers are doing a good job of what I've noticed. They have been stopping the people at the corners, selling fruit and stuff like that. One of the things I haven't noticed is that they don't go to the soccer games, and that's where you guys need to go. No health department would allow something like that that's going on. They sell food, they sell drinks, they sell everything, and they make a mess in the schools. I don't know if that belongs to our code enforcers or if it goes back to the schools. One thing I have noticed is, I used to go around the parks, maybe three times a week, sometimes more. Barnes Park, now that the soccer league is not practicing, the grass is coming back, it's starting to look green. The people have stopped me and say, "Hey, you know, it looks cool, you know, it looks, you guys forcing them out or something." No, they just said, "When I have to start paying." They did come to me... They did come to me on Monday, which I already had checked it out on Saturday, where they have their restrooms, soccer league, wide open, all dirty paperwork, papers, you know. It's a trash. I don't know how the city ever gave them permission to use that. I don't know whose buddy system or what it is. Back home where I come from, there are big problems because of something like that. Although they don't call them buddy system, they call them compadre system. My compadre needs this, my compadre needs that, that's what's happening. And this is something we have to put a stop to it. Of giving out, like Mr. Luna says, giving the, our dirt away, in other words. Starting with the Rome project, what are we getting out of it? We're not getting a penny out of it, no taxpayers, no nothing. And that's something that we need to work together, and start doing the right thing for the people of Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Muilang with public communication. Good evening.
My name is Brandon Macias. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park, and I'm coming to because of the main winner that they were trying to be all behind, Dianza School, it's gonna be by torture school. I have three kids in the school, and I don't think I'm gonna be safe to take my kids to school, or take them to the park, or things like that, because they have mentally issue. And I understand that they need a place to stay, but I don't think it's safe behind a school. Like I said, I have two kids that are in special education, and I'm not gonna feel safe. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, pro tem, distinguished council, Baldwin Park staff, Baldwin Park residents. My name is Fred Barbosa, I live at 16164 Caide Paseo, Irwindale. I would like to speak on the consent calendar that you have on number three. A few weeks ago, some gentlemen came to my house saying that they were very concerned that there was a possibility that someone might be contaminating the aquifer in Irwindale. Being that the aquifer was contaminated 55 years ago by Ojet and Wayne's Oil, I find that, I found that very disturbing. So I went to the council meeting with a bunch of other people, and it was heart-wrenching to see these people so broken down, so desperate, thinking that Irwindale was gonna poison them. And they lashed out at everybody around them that was from Irwindale. And I could see that, it was honest, it was sincere. So the thing that got me is that everything that I had learned was misrepresented to me, or I misunderstood it. Everything that they said was not it, and I know some of you have been there. So I please ask you that you table number three on the consent calendar till more real information is provided. It was sad to see people wearing gas masks and things like that, they had nothing to do with whatever the situation was there, but these people were playing on fears. I found that insultive, insensitive, ignorant, dumb, and probably all of the above. So please wait, clean tech is not the boogeyman that they made him. If you want to go after somebody, I told them, go to Viola, which is 20 feet, 200 feet east of this plant, where they take toxic, volatile, and everything else that you wouldn't want in your town. But that's in Azusa. So thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me this chance to speak to you, and please table that, so some real information is put out there. Plus, the conservatory from the dam was there at this meeting, and they seemed to have their questions answered. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that. Buenas tardes. Yep, you want to go first? Thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
Mi nombre es Margarita Mercado.
My name is Margarita Mercado.
Soy padre voluntaria de Anza.
She's a volunteer parent of Dianza.
Y al igual que muchos padres estamos muy preocupados.
And she, like a lot of other parents, are very worried.
Por el proyecto que se va a hacer en la parte de atrás de la escuela.
Because of the project that's going to be built behind the school.
Estoy aquí representando a ellos.
I am here representing them.
Con mucha preocupación por la seguridad de todos los niños.
With much worry about the safety of our children.
Como adultos entendemos.
Like adults, we understand.
Que las personas que van a estar en ese lugar necesitan ayuda.
We understand that the people that will be there need help.
Pero nuestros hijos son muy importantes porque están chicos.
But our children are very important because they're young.
Van muchas veces solos a la escuela, o se regresan solos.
They sometimes walk to and from school alone.
Y igual, aunque no sean tus hijos, son muy importantes como vecinos o familiares que son para la escuela.
Even though some of the children are not related to her, they are still important and considered family members.
Entonces nuestra preocupación es mucha y necesitamos el apoyo o no sé qué más deberíamos hacer para que no se llevara a cabo ese proyecto.
She says that she would like the support and the help and whatever we can do to be able to help because they do not want that project there.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate that. Anyone else?
Okay, Greg Tuttle, business owner, Baldwin Park. First of all, gentlemen, come up here and talk about Clean Tech. I know it was very emotional, I know a lot of the people that were there and complaining about this. I personally went over and saw this factory. This is my business, and I know Monica says that I'm a little dirty oil changer place, but I do handle used oil, and I work with companies that handle used oil and filter the used oil so we can get rid of it in a proper way. This company is no more a threat than anybody else. The threat is, is the business next to them that's creating this problem, and they're also generating people to come out and to go against this clean tech because they don't want them to expand and clean oil. What they want to do is stop that. This Viola is an environmental hazardous waste place that burns contaminants in the air. And if you'll go down there and look, you'll see a pipe up there with a flag, when they can burn and when they can't burn. That's not what clean tech does. It does filtering, which means it's in a tank, in a closed building, it's not underground or anything else. So you guys in your letter need to reconsider that and get your facts straight before you start sending a letter and making yourself look stupid. The other thing is, is mayor, thank you for your 460 forms. I appreciate that you did make the effort to finally get that done.
Thank you.
The fireworks, we don't have the money to pay the police, we don't have the money to pay the maintenance, we don't have the money to do this and that, but we got money to spend $36,000 plus. It's not bringing revenue in the city, it's taking away the revenue of this city, and for what? And everybody says, oh, everybody wants this. I haven't seen a petition signed one of all this 78 to 80,000 people, the residents and businesses owners in this city that say they want to piss away $36,000 to promote your guy's election for this year. It's a bandstand, and it doesn't help the community. Think about the community, not about the political selves. The other thing, the cottage foods that you have up here, we all know that needs to be controlled, that's a good deal. But, nothing gets controlled when the soccer league goes over there and serves foods and all the chips and all the drinks and everything else over there. That's hands-off, because they're friends of the council. That stops. If you're gonna regulate cottage foods in-house, cooked, they're doing the same thing over there and selling it over on the soccer fields. It needs to be regulated, and chief needs to be having code enforcement over there and being controlled. That's what it's for, and it needs a seller's permit. You even have the wagons over here, lunch wagons at the parks and rec. The lunch wagons have to have permits. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tuttle, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Muilang, anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, mayor.
Hi, good evening.
My name is Elser Antonio. Now, we heard a lot of people talking about complaints from this. I'd like to know, what are you, you're in office right now, what do you want besides like buildings and stuff like that in this town? What do you want? I mean, would you like a bowling alley, would you like a new restaurant? What do you want? What are you gonna do? What are you gonna put up in this town, right, mayor?
This is your time to speak, go ahead.
I just spoke. I just said, mayor, you heard everybody else, I want to know what's your, what are your intentions of what you want to build up in this town? Would you like, are you gonna build a bowling alley here, or you build a new restaurant there, or what?
Once you're finished with the public speaking, I'll answer your question, okay? You have three minutes.
What was that?
Continue speaking, once you finish.
Well, that's it. You know, I just want to know what your intentions are as mayor, are you gonna get the funds and build a bowling alley, a miniature golf course here or something? That's my, that's my question. There's a lot of empty lots out there.
Okay, so that's your final question?
That's the question I'm asking you.
All right, so are you completely finished, though? Because I need to close up the public communication.
All right, this, I just want to know if your intentions are to build something in this town before you resign, or prior to your term of service.
Oh, excuse me.
Not prior to your term of service. I mean, you know, that's when I talked to you, you said about, the big guys have a bowling alley here, stuff like that. See, the middle class people in this town have to go out and do things, the ones that are not married and stuff like that, there's nothing for them to do in this town.
Okay, as soon as you're finished, complete, then I'll go ahead and answer the question, but I have to wait until you're completely finished.
Okay, go on. I'm finished.
Okay, you know what, I have other individuals that are gonna come up and speak, once they, once we complete everything, then I'll go ahead and respond to your question, okay?
Okay, I thought it was.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Thank you, all right.
Honorable mayor, council members, staff, my name is Maury Masial, resident of Baldwin Park, also planning commissioner. Just coming to speak on item number three also. Just wanted to shine some light in regards to Clean Tech. I used to be an employee of Clean Tech. I know how the operation runs, and I can testify that his operation is legit, as far as how he runs it, according to rules of DTS, DTSC. The information that has been given to us, I can testify that has been misleading. So I do ask that you guys take some consideration into looking into these allegations, specifically the EIR, that, you know, that can't even be found, because I haven't been able to get a hold of that copy, to make sure that, you know, everything's in place the way it's supposed to be. Because as far as I know, all he wants to do is add a couple more tanks, storage tanks, to his facility that's already there. There's no new building being built, there's no relocation, it's just adding storage containers in his existing building to store used oil. So please, if you guys consider that and look into that, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Muilang with public communication.
CNO for the interest, and I'll declare the public communication closed. Real quick, let me just address the issue about the facility that's being proposed over by Dianza. For one, the actual individual that purchased the property has not pulled or any permits, nor application has been submitted to the City of Baldwin Park. And of course, that will ultimately, without me jeopardizing anything, because I know I can't do anything or say anything directly, oppose or support the project, because we have to allow that person the opportunity to be able to go through the actual process. Now, Vice Mayor Cruz Baca and I met this past Monday over at Dianza with a lot of parents, I think there's maybe over 30, 35 that were there, and we both covered specific areas informing the, informing the parents that were there. We also had a meeting here last month, I believe it is, where this was packed with residents also concerned opposing the actual project. So I want to let everyone know that there is a process, and it has, the individual has not submitted any application whatsoever. Let me just say that in Spanish, if I could follow through. Primero, sobre el proyecto, el dueño que compró esa propiedad no ha sometido ninguna aplicación, no se le ha dado ningún permiso para hacer el proyecto. Nosotros no podemos decir si estamos apoyando o en contra el proyecto, porque por ley tenemos que darle la oportunidad a la persona del dueño de esa propiedad que continúa con el proceso que hay, eso es por ley. Los quiero dejar a ustedes francamente lo que está ocurriendo en este momento. Así es que nosotros hasta que aplique, se emite, esta, how do you say, Spanish? Se emite todos los, la pepele, el papeleo, entonces, entonces es el momento que nosotros, también con otros comités de la ciudad, vamos a decidir lo que está ocurriendo. Nosotros vivimos en la ciudad de Baldwin Park, eso es muy importante para nosotros, pero por ley tenemos que dejar el proceso que siga adelante. Así es que en este momento no ha aplicado, no ha sumitido absolutamente nada, más claramente para ustedes, okay? All right, so.
Just to add to that note, I met also with a group of families there on Friday before, I guess Monday, we can't all meet together, so we have to meet separately, but I met with a group of families at Dianza School, and I talked with them, and I told them about, I'm sure, you know, I heard out your concerns about safety and a lot of the issues with that facility going into, behind Dianza Schools. And so I share the same concerns, I want you to know that, you know, I want to make sure that, that, you know, that your concerns are met and that there's no issues that are gonna impact the community. But for right now, nobody is putting in a project there, nobody is trying to, you know, they've talked about it, but they haven't put in the applications, you know, for that. So we can't really say right now whether we're for or against, because we have to give everybody an opportunity to follow the process, and then we can make our decisions at that point. Es quiero decir que, que yo tuve una junta, fui a hablar con muchas de las familias que estaban ahí el viernes, hablamos acerca del proyecto, y escuchamos todas las preocupaciones que tienen todos acerca del Wayne Manor. Entonces estamos, ahorita no hay un solicitud que han puesto en la ciudad, entonces al momento no hay un proyecto que está, que van a poner, porque no, no han seguido la compañía metiendo los documentos para que podamos haber un proyecto, pero sí estamos vigilando el proyecto, estamos viendo a lo que, si hay un proyecto, y el momento que sí hay algo pasar, les vamos a llamar toda la comunidad para que ustedes pueden venir aquí y dar su, a lo que ustedes piensan de proyectos, o sí estamos apoyándolos a ustedes, y les queremos escuchar todo lo que ustedes dicen en este tema de proyecto que viene. Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Real quick. All right, I also want to address the gentleman up there about what do I want in Baldwin Park. I think it's what we all want on the council and residents of Baldwin Park. Ultimately, yes, we would like some of the things you talked about, a bowling alley and a multitude of things, but the reality is, we're gonna have to see what the future holds. So just want to make that very clear. The other subject that was talked about.
Mr. Barbosa.
Mr. Barbosa, yes. Wanted to just let you know that I do plan on touring the actual facility itself, so I will be pulling the actual, the actual letter itself. I did speak with several other people and individuals that came here and talked to me, of course, the vice mayor as well, so I want to let you know that I will be pulling that particular article out. Anything else I need to cover?
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Frank, of course, longtime resident of Irwindale and very concerned about what goes on within his community as well as the council here in Baldwin Park, and thank you very much, Frank, for reaching out to us. This is what we need, collaboration in order for us to work not only on this project, but a lot of other projects that incorporate both our cities and lots of times our families that live between Irwindale and Baldwin Park. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Uh, mayor, just one more comment, you know, Mr. Luna, Mr. Rios, you come here, I know you guys are commissioners, sometimes I don't know, you guys sound like wise men, and other times you sound like the Three Stooges. So I'm not sure, when you come up here, make sure that you're accurate in what you say. You know, five of us voted for the Rome project, it was not three. Everybody voted for it, and nobody gave any land away. In exchange for giving the land, we have affordable housing, and in this community, there's a number of people that need. And in this community, there's a number of people that need to have more affordable housing in this community. So it's important that, that when you say information, that it's accurate, and don't just say things that are, that are untrue. So I need to address that, because you consistently come here and make statements that are, that are misinforming the public. The Montebello project is in a process, whether or not we approve it or not, it's still going through, it's in the ENA phase, so eventually we'll get to DDA, and then we'll determine the parameters of the project there. So it's important that you express or the status of the project when we go forward with this information, okay? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for covering that, Councilmember Pacheco. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
For the item that you pulled, item number three, I would still like to have a briefing on that item, the city council.
That's fine.
Well, but he's gonna pull it.
When we get to, all right.
He's gonna pull it.
That's fine, all right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go into the consent calendar, so I'm gonna go ahead and pull item number three, and Councilmember Pacheco, did you wish to? Number four. Anyone else wishing to pull any other items?
I'd like to, for discussion, I would like to pull number nine.
Okay, number nine. All right, so at this point, I will make a motion for move to approve consent calendar with the exception of items number three, four, and nine. Okay, it's been seconded. Any objections? Seen none, so move. At this point, we'll go over to the up three, which is the opposition to the city of Irwindale's approval of the proposed Klinktech Environmental, Inc. facility expansion. So staff recommends that the council approve a letter to the city, City of Irwindale in opposition to propose expansion of the Klinktech, but Councilmember Monica Garcia. Do, oh, did you have any questions about that?
No, I just asked for a briefing back to the city council at the appropriate time, you know.
Oh, that's fine. All right, so.
Definitely within the next, I would say, you know, couple of meetings, I'd like to know, I'd like to understand what's going on, and I expect that our staff would tell us, you know, kind of what, what's the, you know, just, you wanna talk to it right now?
Go ahead.
I can give a brief overview, if you'd like. A couple of weeks ago, a number of residents and other members of the community spoke. Thereafter, Mark Castanoglu and myself, we toured their facility to get an understanding of what they do. And I guess under state guidelines, used motor oil is considered toxic until it's tested. So this company, one of the things they're doing is they're gathering used motor oil in order for it to be recycled, and they bring it to their facility. And at that point, it has to be assumed hazardous until it's tested. What they do there is they download it, filter it, and then test it. Actually, they do testing before they download it. If it's determined to be toxic, it cannot be unloaded at their facility, and it has to leave and go to another facility. If it is, tests okay, it's no longer considered hazardous, they pump it into their tanks, they filter it, and then they put it on larger trucks to be shipped to another facility, normally up north or out of the state, to be fully recycled. And they currently have two 20,000 gallon tanks, and it looks like the only change they're proposing at this time is to increase that to 13 tanks, as opposed to two.
So I have a couple of questions on the filtering process. I'd like to better understand that. And then, second, you know, what are the mitigation, you know, factors, I guess, for any leakage or things like that? So if you could, if you could look into that and get, you know, get that information back to us.
I can answer some of that now, if you'd like. The first question on the mitigation is, the tanks are all contained within areas where the wall is extra thick, the floor is extra thick, and has two-to-three-foot walls surrounding it. So if there's any kind of spill or leakage, even if a tank were to burst and rupture, it is all contained within these walls, and so nothing is allowed to spill or leave the site. As far as the filtering, it's a very really simple process, and most of the filtering is done because the oil has to be pumped into the tank, so it's a very small filter, about this big, which takes out any large pieces that can't go into the pump. It then goes into the large tanks where they basically let gravity do its work, and the water goes to the top, and the oil, I'm sorry, the oil goes to the top, water goes to the bottom, so they can siphon off the oil, and that's pretty much all to their process.
All right, okay, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to pull that item number three. Any objections? Seen none, so move. All right, item number four, which is a renewal of an agreement with the Berkshire Group for Financial Consultants, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Oh, Mayor, I would like to have that item moved to the, to another council meeting. I just, I wanna have more time to take a look at that agreement, and make sure that it doesn't have issues that we had the last time we had this agreement.
All right, I'll second. Any objections?
Yeah, I would like to discuss this a little bit here, please.
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely, yes.
This has been brought up again, and I would like for the council to take into consideration, and I know that Councilmember Pacheco doesn't agree with me, but I would like to take into consideration that there has been quite a substantial savings to our city, and review of a lot of contracts that were, that were renegotiated. The transit alone will save us in the next three to five years a million dollars, the transit buses. We are going to be purchasing four new buses, I believe, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, as well as correcting some of the dial-a-ride issues that we've had. So the residents and some of the seniors are extremely happy with, with the changes that will be taking place in the very near future, and whatever has taken place already. There has been a lot of, he has been able to look at some of the old contracts that we had, that, like I said, were negotiated to, to save the city and to generate more revenue. I, I respect Councilmember Pacheco's opinion. However, I would like for the rest of the council members to really take into consideration what the savings had been and how he has helped us. Thank you.
I would like to also make a comment, just real quickly.
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with Mayor Protem Cruz Baca. This is one particular contract where we do not pay money unless we have savings. Yes, there's other minimal costs in terms of the visits, but, once again, we do not pay unless he saves us money, and as Mayor Protem has shared, there has been a lot of savings. Do you have a number for us, Cruz?
Well, as far as the transit buses, Dan, can you help me with that? I know that the transit buses in the next three to five years will be a million dollars. It's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to $200,000 a year.
A year, yes, that's, that's right. About $200,000 a year between savings through route, rightsizing the routes, and by increasing the fares.
And just, oh, I'm sorry, and just to add to that, so that's just one aspect of it, but there's so many things that are in place that are gonna save us millions of dollars, so I don't see why we would wanna stall something that has been working, has brought savings to the city, and we can definitely use the extra revenue to take care of our contracts and take care of our, of our community in terms of programs like the fireworks that we're having issues paying out of general funds. We do need the savings. Once again, I don't see why we wanna stall something that brings a lot of revenue, or extra cash, to the city. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
What about concerns that I would like to look at and talk a little more with staff, are the contractual issues that we've had problems with in the past, is, you know, how, how they get paid, it's not clear, and either the scope of work very clear. So I would like to just spend some time, sit down with staff, take a look at it, and then bring, bring back some of those issues. There also have been some issues with some of the recommendations that were brought forth that didn't really work out, so I just wanna make sure that there's a clear focus and scope of work on the contract, which I'm just not, you know, clear on. So I would like to just hold it off, I'm just asking to hold it off for another meeting.
But I do need to explain one thing, though. He doesn't get paid unless he saves us money.
Okay, well, last time he asked, he paid.
The company does not, does not get paid if they did not save us, for whatever reason. If there is no savings, they do not get paid.
Okay, if I may, Mayor Protem Baca, there was an issue, contractual issue, of how he was gonna get paid during, on the last contract, and it was just because it was not clarity in the contract, and that's what I wanna look at.
That's fine.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, all right, so thank you. So at this point, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. I went ahead and seconded it. Are there any objections?
I object.
Okay, one objection. So at this point, I said we could have roll call, please. Thank you. There's, thank you very much.
Roll call on item four. Mayor Lozano?
Excuse me. Yeah, the motion, the motion is, hold, hold on, the motion is to move this over, as requested by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. I second it, and there, one objection, so at this point right now, yes, to move it over.
Mayor Protem Baca?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Rubio?
No.
Okay, the motion passes at three, two, so it will be moved over.
Could we please have a date, though, so that this doesn't go on for two, three months? Could we please have a specific date as to when it will be brought back?
Three meetings from now?
Pardon me?
Three meetings from now?
Could we please have it at the beginning of June? I think that the information that you need could be gathered pretty, pretty quickly. It's not something that we have to dig in the archives. This has only been going on for the last year or so, so I would really like to bring it back at the first meeting in June.
Well, there's already been a, we'll bring it back soon enough. I'm not gonna make it wait.
But I would like a specific date, so it doesn't linger. This is very important to our residents.
I think so, too, but I think also it's gotta be clarity.
And I would like it for the beginning of June, the first meeting in June.
Well, make it in a form of a motion, if you want, and then I'll second that. I agree with you.
I would like to make a motion that we bring it back to the first council meeting in June.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any objections? So there's no objections? All right, so at this point, the motion passes, so it will be back in the first meeting in June.
Mayor, I would just ask that when we bring that item back, let's, let's have a, you know, let's have a list of the areas, because I don't think I've ever had a full, you know, inventory of the items. I know that, you know, you two have talked about it, and I think you've been on an ad hoc committee, but I don't think we have received that same information, so if you can, you know, when we take it up.
Well, Mr. Horowitz has made presentations, but I would suggest that if we can ask him to come back and give us another presentation.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think for that particular council meeting, I think that would be a good idea, so he can keep us all up to date as to what he's doing.
Sure, I would like to hear what he's accomplished.
Just to clarify, there is no ad hoc committee. The presentation has been done to the full council. There is no ad hoc committee for that.
That's fine.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we'll go to item number nine, which is the award of contract for citywide janitorial services to clean maintenance. So at this point, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cruz Baca.
Yes, and the contract, thank you, Manny. As far as I can see, you know, yes, we do need, there's a lot of complaints. However, is it possible for us to do a one-year contract instead of a two-year contract, so that we can see how that's going to work? We've had so many problems with the janitorial for not only the park, but a lot of complaints. I think we should see if this is gonna work with this company. So could we do the contract for one year?
Sure, I'd have to refer that element of the modification of the agreement back to the city attorney.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. Yes, you can modify a contract from here, but you have to make sure you're very clear about what the modifications are going to be, and then you can vote on any modifications.
It's only for the terms of the agreement. The agreement says it's for two years.
Yes, it can be modified here from the DIA.
For just the one-year period, and to be reviewed by the council at that particular time, and also from, by Mr. Carrillo, to see if the, if the program's working with that particular company.
So yes, all you'd need is a motion with that modification, spell that out in your motion, and then you can vote on it.
Okay, I make a motion that we, that we amend the contract for a one-year period, and that it would be left up to the discretion of the council in order to continue per their agreement that they are fulfilling their end of the contract as stated.
Uh, Mayor, if I may.
I'll second that.
Hold on for a second. I think Horowitz Group made a recommendation on that, for it to go, for not to have it contracted so that staff would do it. So I thought that, I don't know why we're contracting this out. I was under the assumption that, under the Horowitz recommendations, one of them was we would save money if staff did this particular item.
Yes, that's accurate. We did hire part-time staff to conduct all the janitorial services, and it did not work out. So it's basically.
We didn't save any money?
No, we, we are not going to save any money. That is my observation, the Public Works Director, as well as the Chief Executive Officer, that it was more of a cost-neutral element.
Okay, so we're gonna outsource it now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, one year's fine with me.
Yes, there are some programs that work and some that don't. Unfortunately, we didn't have the staff to be able to clean the restrooms or the facilities like they should have been. So it was discussed a while back that it would, they would put out an RFP, which they did, and this particular company fulfilled what we were looking for, and for the price, and the only thing I want, I'm in a agreement.
One year's fine.
One year.
And then we could review them after.
Okay.
So just really, really quick, a quick question.
Yes, it has been already.
So Manny, so Berkshire had recommended that we have that in-house, we didn't have the staffing, so now we put the RFP out and are going with this contract.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so at this point, we have a motion, and it was seconded as well, any objections for the modifications. So at this point, any objections? Have not seen none? Okay, we'll move. All right, thank you. We're going over to the public hearing, item eleven, which is conduct a public hearing to consider requests for consideration of a proposed amendment to the city's municipal code, adding language relating to cottage food operations in accordance with the state law, location, all residential zones, applicant, city of Baldwin Park, case number AZC-176. The Honorable and the distinguished Amy Harvin, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the audience. As the mayor stated, the item that is before you is a request to amend the city's municipal code, adding language relating to cottage food operations in accordance with state law. In September of 2012, the California Legislature, the governor, signed Assembly Bill 1616, which requires that all local governments adopt regulations and development standards relating to cottage food operations. AB 1616 became effective January 1st, 2013, and as a result, local governments are required to amend their municipal codes to comply with the state law. Cottage food operations are generally described as small food businesses that produce non-potentially hazardous foods, such as certain baked goods, candies, jams, jellies, dried pastas, dried fruit and baking mixes, to operate out of a private home with limited regulatory oversight, provided certain criteria met. The city can enact reasonable standards, however, only on certain factors, such as spacing and concentration, traffic control, parking and noise control. This proposed code amendment includes new additions of all the new various terms, including cottage food operation, cottage food operator, cottage food products, direct and indirect sales, and home occupation. Specifically, what's gonna happen is the home occupation section of the city zoning code is proposed to be deleted and replaced with language, which would not only apply to typical home occupations, such as offices, but also home occupations that are classified as cottage food operations. Furthermore, the county of Los Angeles will administer all county regulations related to health and safety and sanitation of the cottage food facilities within the city. So this time, staff and the planning commissioner are recommending that the city council open the public hearing, and following the public hearing introduced for first reading by Title Only and Way for the Reading Ordinance 1371, entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, Amending Baldwin Park Municipal Code Chapters 153.220 and 153.120 to Establish Regulations for Cottage Food Operations." And this concludes staff's presentation.
Uh, Mayor, I just have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
What are the costs for, I guess, so this would be like a household, somebody that's cooking food to sell it?
This would, the cost would be just the standard, what another home occupation would be, which I believe, Craig, please help me, around...
Hundred bucks or so?
Yeah, if that.
Okay, so they get that permit, then they have to go to the county and get registered, like, somebody opening a restaurant and have those same types of...
Yes, that is correct. They would have to go to the county, and they have their own regulations, and that is part of the checklist that we have for the new cottage food application.
Okay, so they gotta get, take a class on food preparation and all that?
Honestly, I do not know what the county requires. All I know is that they have to sign the application stating that they've gone to the county and get a county permit.
Now, who are we trying to target in the community that's not following these rules now?
Actually, to be honest with you, I've been actually in contact with a woman by the name of Alison Schmitzel, who is very looking interested into doing a cottage food operation here in the city. I haven't really talked that in depth with her, so I don't know what she sells. This ordinance actually applies to all residential zones within the city of Baldwin Park, so...
Okay, so how big can she expand? Are the persons who'd open these, is this like a business, or trying to open and make food at home?
It is a business, which is classified, which is worked out of your home, and all of the development criteria are actually in the application in the operations permit, which is continued in the back. It is a very small area, no more than, I would say, probably about 130 square feet of your home. Or kitchen.
Okay. I mean, is this hard to control, as far as, how does code enforcement, how are you going to administer this new ordinance? What is the, is staff gonna be out there?
This would be through the home, this would be through the home occupation license, which is given through business license. This is just attached on to the home occupation business license, which business license administers.
But how do we, you know, the city, know that somebody's doing this business? Or do we just, we're just asking them to come up and apply for these?
We would have to rely on neighbors or complaints that we do receive. Unfortunately, until somebody complains, it's difficult for code enforcement to be proactive in that sense. However, you know, we would get, I would assume that we could also look on the county website, which actually lists all, anybody that's come to the county to get cottage food operators' permits.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Mayor, yes, I'd like to ask, Amy, can we bring this back for, you know, a study session, or just so that we can have a little more discussion on it? I think, you know, you raised some good points, Councilmember Pacheco, about regulation. I'm wondering, you know, about like any signage that could pop up, or just, you know, I'd like to engage in more of a discussion on this, to better understand the cottage food operation, and, you know, kind of what, provide some examples too, so that we have a point of reference.
So do you wanna bring this back?
I would, yeah. I'd like to bring it back to a study session.
Yeah, 'cause there's some questions I have, so let's go ahead and move this. It's not of any urgency, am I correct? Let's bring it back, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to bring back this public hearing, which is items 11 and 12. That is my motion.
No, second.
Second. Any objections? See none, so, okay, thank you, Amy, 'cause I do have other questions. Thank you very much, though. All right, at this point, we're gonna go to reports of officers, which is 13. Even though I closed it out?
Number 12?
No, I did not. Even though we've moved it in over? So, all right, at this point, reports of officers, item 13, which is a formation of median landscape design ad hoc committee.
I'm sorry, Mayor, for the public, is this supposed to have, oh, you're gonna move 11 over and 12?
Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and move, yeah, that's why I said 11 and 12, I wanna move it over.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay?
Is it time-sensitive?
Is that okay, or is that an issue?
This is the final public hearing, and the report is due to head by May 15.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So I'll take it back. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and motion to reopen item number 12. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, let's go ahead, I'll open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of the, which I read this, conducting a second public hearing regarding the five-year consolidated plan fiscal year 2015-16, annual action plan, the citizens' participation plan, and analysis of... So at this point, that is my, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? What's Amy doing?
She's leaving.
Oh, okay, all right, then she's gonna come up here. All right, so at this point, at this point, I'll go ahead and close, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. At this point, Susan, come on up here. Are there any questions, staff, I mean, councilmembers? If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Second.
Second. Any objections? See none, so move. Excellent presentation.
Thank you, Suzie. Fabulous.
So, so at this point...
You can go home now, Amy. Good night.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, reports of officers, number 13, which is the formation of the landscape design ad hoc committee.
Mayor and councilmembers, the governor has, under executive order, has directed the water control board to prohibit the irrigation of ornamental turf in city-owned medians. While these regulations have not been adopted yet, currently, there's a drought circulating. What I'd like to do is have an ad hoc committee with a couple of councilmembers on it to begin the process of actually designing non-turf medians within the city, so that we will still have, our medians will still be beautiful, however, they will no longer be grass. And so, I'm asking for two councilmembers.
Okay, any...
I will volunteer.
Okay, hold on. I think we can only have two on there, so who wants to be on there?
I'll volunteer.
I think we're, I think we're probably all interested.
Can we have, well, we could...
Should we flip a coin?
Why don't you just bring it out, so all the councilmembers will participate?
Yeah, I was gonna...
Yeah, let's do that.
We could certainly, we'll conduct workshops, is the way we'll handle this.
Perfect.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Very good.
Great job. How about that, all the council green? All right, so, at this point, at this point, we're going to item 14, which is consideration of hosting the Fourth of July. Fourth of July fireworks celebration. So at this point, we have three different options. One is to provide direction as to whether to move forward with hosting of the Fourth of July celebration. Two, provide direction for an allocation of $26,000 July 3rd, or $36,000. Three, authorize the advertising and the RFP for professional. So, real quick, let me just say, I know from the, from the actual Circo Vargas, what is it, Circo Vargas, what was that? Oh, Caballero, excuse me. We, did we receive, I know you said 10,000, 11,000?
Yes, we have received 10,000 to date.
Okay, so what's the total cost of this, of this, $33,000, or what?
Depending on what day, if you would like it on July 4th, there is a cost of $36,509. And if the council should desire to have it on the 3rd, it would be approximately $27,509.
But we've always had it Fourth of July.
Yes.
Yeah, I would recommend July 4th.
I have a question, Manny. How come it's so high, the $36,000 for July the 4th?
It's because we are approximately a few months away from the show, so the pyrotechnician vendors are charging a higher fee, because we have not scheduled in advance. They only have a few vacancies, so they're charging a higher fee than we would traditionally charge if we had booked them a few months ago.
All right, okay, so basically...
Supply and demand, right, Manny?
Yes, it is.
What are some of the costs involved, I mean, for $26,000, what do we look, is it mostly...
Some of the costs involved are, just off the top of my head, would be approximately $20,000 to $25,000 for a fireworks show. We would have, we would have some entertainment on the main stage. We would have some overtime for the public works department, as well as a police department. We would have some part-time staff in the recreation community services department, as well as some side attractions in terms of a clown, stilt walker, and some carnival rides. And I think that, off the top of my head, pretty much covers all elements of the program.
Well, one of the things that I, when I was talking to our city manager earlier about, when we do programs here in the city, you know, why we need to advertise them better, like when we do our street fairs and concerts in the park, and somehow tie it into the downtown, so the downtown businesses also take advantage of the different crowds, so somehow we could all tie it together. And possibly the funding, instead of going to our general fund, we could possibly go to our business improvement fund, and I understand there's at least $600,000 or so in there. And I think that's the fund that we should use, and instead of the general fund, possibly fund it that way. But, and the reason I wanna go that route is to be able to include and have the businesses participate, possibly have a booth out there for free, and they can also, you know, participate in the fireworks show and then advertise their business. And that way, we make it, you know, sort of a business, and, you know, with Fourth of July, and advertise more. And I think, you know, just like the way we did our street fairs, where a lot of vendors that wanted to participate came out, and I think it helped their, you know, their business, they got their name out there. And so I think that's the direction we should head in with all of our programs, to make sure that they're all tied in somehow with our local businesses participating. Do a little more advertisement, you know, use, you know, the social network, do our now, maybe send out a special flyer, so that all our businesses get to participate in that. So I would say, I would change, I guess, well, it sounds like you gotta approve all three, versus the, well, I would say just change the funding, not go to the general fund, go to the business fund.
I feel very uncomfortable about that, I really do. Only because it is a wonderful celebration, but we're also looking at Baldwin Park's 50th anniversary next year. We're going to be paying extra money, because this is a last-minute thing, to get the pyrotechnics or whatever it is. So I just feel that now we're running to try to get something done at the last minute and paying the price for it. I feel very uncomfortable for doing that, when we're still haven't really settled some of the negotiations that we have pending. I do that with a heavy heart, and I don't, I don't agree right now, as much as I love a celebration like anyone else. The Fourth of July is fantastic, but I think that, as I mentioned before, I have two vendors or two sponsors that are willing to come forward, but they can't do it this year. It's too late. They will come forward to do it next year.
Two vendors to do the...
Two sponsors that will sponsor the Fourth of July for the previous year. That, the way I sold it to them was that, what would you do if you could incorporate it with a parade and celebrate our 50th anniversary? And both of them said that would not be a problem. So that's what I'm looking at right now.
Well, I, you know, I think it provides overtime for, you know, public safety and public works, you know, out of that fund, I mean, the benefit in that, but more importantly, it benefits our local businesses. You know, one thing that we fail to do, I think when we have events, is we don't tie it in with our local businesses. We don't have enough promotion and enough, you know, working with our different businesses to have booths. And I'm sorry, Mayor, there's a lot of noise over here, but, so that's what I'm looking at. I think we could be more successful if we continue as a city to promote our businesses more through the events that the city has. And I think, you know, Fourth of July is obviously a big event that a lot of our businesses could get a lot of exposure for very low cost. They could be on the flyers, they could be on the social media, on the website, and I think that would really help our businesses, so the sales tax would be recouped, and that's how we would do our sales tax increases, by helping to promote our downtown businesses, could probably pay for the cost of some of these events. And that's why they pay for, you know, when they pay their business license, that's where the funding comes for those types of things. So I think, you know, the businesses are expecting us to help promote them, to help them get their name out, and I think it's a way that, by having our businesses participate in the many city events that we have a lot of success in, and draws a lot of crowd to be able to fund it in that way.
This is what, and I agree, and we do need to promote our businesses. This is a one-day event, and we do have the concerts in the park and our street fair that was so successful last year. And I believe that those are continuous, weekly, or every other week that's been going on, and I believe that a lot of our businesses had a lot of success in promoting their businesses in that particular, instead of just a one-day event. I, being that it's Fourth of July, a lot of our businesses will probably be closed and not available. I can probably tell you right now that most of the businesses that I know on Main and besides Superior and that shopping center, but most of the businesses on the mom-and-pop operations, let's call them that, will be closed on Fourth of July and not available. They would rather wait for the concerts in the park, as well as the street fair, that they are really looking forward to.
Well, okay, oh yeah, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I mean, I like the idea of promoting our businesses more, with tying them into our events, and just making it maybe that day, or maybe that weekend, or so, you know, I mean, maybe we can encourage our businesses to also provide some marketing, you know, that our residents would take advantage of, and it would give them a location to go and, you know, kind of have a meal and continue the celebration, if you will. Because I know, growing up here in the city, there weren't as many establishments, and so we were always looking for, after a big event, where do we go eat? Or, you know, after a football game, or something, where do we go eat? So I like the idea, and maybe there's something that we can do by promoting them through now, getting our businesses to also plan ahead, and maybe it's a discount, or maybe it's some kind of promotion, you know, so I like that idea. But Manny, as far as the concert in the park, or the concerts in the park and the street fair, can you give me a cost break, or not a cost breakdown, but a price tag for each?
A price tag for a concert...
Actually, for the series, the concerts in the park?
Okay, I am not quite prepared to answer that, but I could give you an approximate amount, off the top of my head. It is probably about $4,000 per concert, so four times seven.
Okay, so twenty, and then the street fair costs us how much?
Approximately $6,200 per event.
And how many events?
We are having six events, but with the street fair, we do generate some revenue, a significant amount of revenue.
And I, yeah, I'd like to actually see that, kind of that breakdown, 'cause I've heard, I keep hearing that it's generated revenue, and perhaps it offsets our cost. But, you know, the notion that we are able to recover all of the costs, I think is an exaggeration, because I haven't seen any numbers. But the reason why I ask this is because, you know, clearly there are events in our community that have been important to us, and that are costly, and, you know, we can justify it one way or another. The Fourth of July, this is a staple event. This is an event that has been in our community for a number of years. It celebrates our country's history, and it also recognizes, we often take the opportunity to recognize the individuals that have served for this country. And so I think, you know, again, every event will come with a cost. Every event can be justified. I think this is a staple event, and we should absolutely bring it back. I also advocate bringing back the Baldwin Park Parade, because this is another community event, youth event. I participated in the parade as a Girl Scout, cheerleader, band member, you name it. And so, you know, this is part of community development. And so, I would also, I agree with Thomas Carey, actually, that we need to clamp down on some of the activities that happen outside of this event, and really bring as many residents out to the Fourth of July, you know, make it a safer community on that particular day. Engage your businesses. And so with that, I would like to motion that we move forward with this Fourth of July event. Thank you.
I just want to comment.
Hold on, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Before, I would like...
But go ahead.
For discussion before we vote. But just to clarify, I know that Councilmember Monica Garcia said that she doesn't believe that we recover our costs from the street fairs. We do not pay from general funds. That came out from the business district funding, and that was the reason why I believe the businesses were successful, in that we worked together with the city and the businesses to make this happen. The businesses were very involved, and they really worked hard to be part of the process. And once again, it didn't come out of the general fund, so there was, to say we didn't recover our costs, it's, there's no comparison, because the fireworks stand comes out of our general fund, so it's two different things. So just wanted to clarify.
Let me amend my motion. I'd like to move to approve for the Fourth of July and let it come out of the BID, 'cause I understand Shannon has stated that there is funding, so let's...
Okay, all right, so there's a second. Any objections? And just to clarify, that does not come out of the general fund.
Yes, I have an objection.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Is it possible for me just to open up for an amendment to your motion just before you guys vote? You know, the difference between having it on the 3rd and the 4th is $10,000. And one of the things that I was having a discussion with, actually, our Parks and Recs, is that is really truly a family event, so I can see the value to it, but, you know, I also think of our employees, and we're talking about how they're always gone from their families every holiday because they have to work. And I thought if it could save us $10,000 to have it on a Friday, many cities scattered it, they have it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so people could attend different events. I would make, try and make a motion to have it at least on the Friday, which is the 3rd, so we can save $10,000. And that would allow our families here in Baldwin Park to spend Fourth of July with their families. So if I can maybe have that entertained, that would be great.
I second.
Okay, what was, could you repeat that?
To have it on the 3rd, because you save $10,000 if you have it on the 3rd. And then secondly, it adds value, because it is a family event, and so our staff, our police, our Parks and Recs could spend that day with their families. So I think that maybe $10,000 would be even an added bonus.
There was a first, a motion made, so let's clarify that one, and then we could look at the other one motion.
So at this point, there's a motion for us, for us that's amended by Councilmember Monica Garcia, to bring that out of the business improvement tax, which, again, is not, doesn't affect the general fund at all.
Yeah, Mayor, but you have to consider one thing, it has to be tied to the businesses. And we're getting into a gray area here, because it has to be part of the business And, and we're getting into a gray area here, because it has to be part of the business and promoting the businesses, so that has to be a big component to be able to use that funding. So I'm just, would be a little bit careful, because that is meant for the businesses.
Mayor, you made a motion, clarified the first motion.
Okay, there's a motion, and it's been seconded. Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection. So at this point, we could take roll call, please. Thank you.
We'll start with you, Mayor Lozano.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Baca?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubio?
No.
Okay, the motion passes three, two. All righty. So at this point, we're going to entertain that second motion?
Well, I don't think you can because of it passed. Am I correct?
Okay, that's fine. All right, okay, the-
So that's what I wanted to say before you guys pass the motion, in case you wanted to entertain the motion.
Let me, let me just say, I think it's important for us, I know it may be a, a, controversial issue. It literally attracts over six thousand residents in Baldwin Park. Not everyone lights fireworks, firecrackers out, well, no, a whole lot of them would do. But there's a lot of residents that attend this, this, uh, this particular event, and it, it's, it's in regards to the birthday of the United States and it's in regards to all the veterans that have served, literally. So we're definitely gonna have it on Fourth of July. So thank you, thank you very much, everyone. All right, so at this point, at this point, we have, um, oh, that's it. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna move for a German, oh, hold on, we forgot. What I wanna do is, yeah, um, get the word out to all the residents about the water usage. And I know that the Governor has major plans throughout the city. What I have seen is a car wash has been pretty busy, so that means a lot of people are really taking note. Um, wanna make sure that we're promoting, I guess, this, well, I guess we'll talk about when we bring the water drop stuff, but it's, it's important, so I'll, I'll then, there. At this point, I'm gonna move for a German. Yes, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
And add one item, and the, uh, just report on our, uh, two-plus-two committee, which is now the CCC Committee, or the, uh, Community Collaborative Committee. And we've had a lot of success in working in that committee. Uh, I have, uh, worked with, uh, Mayor Potem Cruz Baca, and, um, a lot of other, uh, the, the school district, okay, the, the school district, the water district, uh, Mount SAC, uh, and a lot of agencies that we've really been able to, uh, move forward with, uh, trying to bring a workforce center here to Baldwin Park, and working with the EDD, the Employment Development Department. We've had, uh, several meetings with them, and, uh, we, we found a site that will use the Adults, uh, Center site. And we have an MOU that was passed by the school district to work with EDD to be able to, to, uh, use that site. And we're having, uh, we met also with the community, the County Supervisor, uh, Josie Marquez, actually, she's the, uh, the County's, uh, EDD or Economic Development Director for the county. Uh, she has brought her staff over and, and been able to, um, uh, work with us to make this come to fruition. So be, so in the next, uh, hopefully by August or September, we're looking at opening up, uh, a job center, uh, with, with Mount SAC and, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, with, with the school district, Mount SAC, and the adult school. So it's a collaboration of a lot of agencies that have come together, uh, and to be able to make this, uh, successful. So we'll, we'll be reporting more on that as we get closer to the day. We'll probably have a, an open house for the grand opening for that, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will move for a German in the City Council. That's my motion.
Second.
Second, any, thank you. Any objections? See none. Vive Baldwin Park, good evening. Buenas noches.
Can I post a pic?
Send me the pictures now.
Oh, yeah, I'll send them to you guys. I'll send them to you.
Don't wait till we-
Hold on, I'm gonna get together with them. I'll send them to you. Hold on. The pictures we took, I'll, I'll send them.
The one that, you know, that he took, 'cause I didn't wanna give them.